Bill, you sure do honor the pageant. Do you think your people in Nashville and surrounding cities need this?
Sure.
Is Jim Lowes here, right? People of law in that ring, okay?
Yes. Father, precious Father, we come to you with open arms. We love you, Lord, for what you do for us and the blessings that you stole upon us each and every day, Lord. The fact that you sent Christ through the cross to die for our sins, to give us a chance to be with you in eternity is certainly a gift that we can never repay, and certainly we love you for that as well. We've had a lot of things that have happened here in our community, in our state, over the last 24 hours, Lord. You know what those are. You know that we've had a number of people who've lost loved ones due to the catastrophe that's occurred in Nashville and surrounding areas, Lord. We ask that you be with them, help ease their pain. Anybody that was injured during the storms, we ask that you be with them as well, and continue to work to make them better if they be in your will, Lord. We also remember at this time, we have one of our own that was involved in the accident today, Lord. We ask that you work with each and every one that was in that accident, Lord, to help them to get better if possible, and just keep your holy hand upon them. And now, as we continue with this meeting, we ask that you give council the knowledge that you have them to have to make sound decisions for our community, in the exaltation of thy name, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible)
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 Mr. Archer.
Fred.
Mr. Hoskins.
Here.
Ms. Thompson.
There.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Stanfield.
I'm number four. For your meetings in your favor in 2023, what's council's favor?
I'd like to approve.
And Mr. Hoskins, have a say.
Second.
Second, Tom Caldwell, say.
Mr. Archer.
Yes.
Mr. Hoskins.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Carricks. I'm number... Unfortunately, your board's provision department, what's council's favor?
Don't move, Mayor.
And Mr. Wilson, have a say.
Second.
Mr. Caldwell, say.
Mr. Archer.
Yes.
Mr. Hoskins.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Carricks. I'm number six. Any comments or assistance? Tammy? Okay, Tammy.
How you doing, Mayor Stanfield?
I'm fine.
I'd just like to bring ingredients on behalf of Congressman Plushman, and he is in DC this week, but he is very pleased to serve the people in Lefolli and Campbell County. And if there's anything that you would like me to pass on to him, any news or any concerns, I'll be happy to do that. So I'll be glad to talk with you after the meeting is over, or you can speak to me now if that's what you'd like to do. But we're always happy to serve when we can, and thank you. Appreciate it.
Tammy, we appreciate it. We appreciate Chuck. Chuck at Canadian Beer of Eugene was in Washington this past week, and Chuck asked about me. Tell me, you got a $20?
Okay.
This mayor's getting on pay a lot. If you can give five of our council members, I really appreciate it. Thank you, Tammy. Anybody else, anybody? You can't make it?
No. They come up here, I look closer so I can hear you.
Okay.
If you remember when Hadford was on the board here, he couldn't hear either.
I tried to give you your hearing aids.
And that's the last thing I'm trying to do is get a hearing aid. I done got these things. But I talked to Mark, or one of the Monday, I guess it was, Dave Susan, and he said it's gonna be about three weeks before that EPA gala.
Daniel, actually, I found out tonight that it's gonna be the 13th.
Right. She sent me a message. She said she can meet, she can try to meet with us on the 13th of March, and she wanted me to check with you on that, see if that time, that date was a good day. And she gave me two other dates, and I'm looking for those now.
They were after the 13th. I'm sure Mr. Hadford wants the quickest one that he can get.
That's what I was thinking. There's a lot of time involved in there, and as old as I am, I ain't got that much time left. So I'd better be getting on with it if I'm gonna do it. And so I made an answer on when, you know, she's gonna be, she's gonna be here on the 13th, she said? She said she would, let me see, she said the 13th would be the earliest that she could meet, the 13th of March, at 11:01 or 1:30, and then she picked the, also, the 20th and the 30th of March. I noticed it on the 13th. We'll put it down. We'll call her, let her know. Call me, let me call. Yeah, we'll confirm that with her, and then let you know. This is the date. I think it is. Now, let me ask you, if for some reason she's ran into an issue and cannot do the 13th now, is the 20th or the 30th, are those good dates for you? Is it random? I'd say drag it on more times. Yeah, I understand, but I just wanna make sure. She knows when she can or she can't. I think she's from Nashville. I know things comes up, but let's shoot for the 13th. Okay.
Let's do 11 o'clock. 11 o'clock.
11 o'clock would be fine.
That's early. She said 11.
We're gonna meet at here, or?
We'll meet.
We'll meet at the drive.
Y'all can meet right, we can, we'll make the conference room available to you, and y'all can meet right back there, and then I'm sure y'all wanna drive up to the buildings. So we'll make it available, and you can just...
We need to get this, we need to get this thing on the road, you know? He's got somebody to bring that building.
Friday.
I made her aware that it's kinda do it as quickly as possible. She knows Friday we...
We want that building built first. We're in her mercy.
Yeah, we are.
We're wanting made with her. We gotta wait on her time.
Yep. Yep. I guess we have to. Maybe I don't have a choice. But...
Any big changes, we'll let you know.
What if I can get a home oven, set it up quickly?
Go for it. We'll make it available for, anytime you, if you can set it up for, we'll make the room available for you. Anytime you can, anytime you can get her here, we'll make it available.
She is with the EPA over the...
FEMA Flood Management.
FEMA.
Yep. Do you have her contact information? Is that private, or?
I'll give him my office number.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've worked with her before.
Okay. Now, she is Tennessee Emergency Management Agency, so I think she is attached to FEMA, but she is actually a state employee.
They'll send federal people out.
Well, that's why I say, I think she's like a... Attached. Get me that information to make sure that I'm talking about the right person. Matter of fact, I'll write something down.
Thank you, sir.
I should stick you up. I don't wanna stick you up.
Three more comments, please. Sir?
Over here. I wanna do likewise. I wanna come to the front because getting over, going here as well, things of that nature. But anyway, I'd like to tell you who I am and what my concerns are, and basically what I'm here about today. Basically, I would like to hand each, I don't know who is your council members, I don't have a clue who that would be, or whoever, but I would like to hand you a piece of paperwork here, so y'all don't have to pass it around, everybody'll have one if I may. I'd like to start out doing that.
Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Mayor.
Would you like one?
Yeah, please.
Okay. And, there we go.
Mark Hoskins.
Okay, Mark.
Oh, thank, my fingers are, I've done too much construction, my thumbs are too big.
Okay. What I would like to start out by saying, I don't wanna make this ugly, I don't wanna make it a dolphin pony show. I wanna come here to just find out the status of this bill that we have presented to your, from what I understand, it's your city administrator. He has a copy of this. Some of the people are well aware of our bill and things that's been sent in. And saying that, I don't see it anything but a legit and fair bill that was a, we were called in to do some emergency assessment work, and we were told in the beginning that it was gonna be on structures that was controlled and everything by the city. And my concerns were from the beginning, we didn't go to, I was told that we were gonna actually go to a, and I, everything that I have for you today, and everything that I have to offer you, I not only have you here to take my word for it, but I also have it on this phone. I can show you where I was called and asked to come to this city. I can also show you things on this thing that I would rather not show you at this point in time, but if you ask, I will be happy to share it with you. And saying that, I'm gonna tell you in a couple of seconds about us. Our company is a company that's been operating for 40 years. I'm an unlimited general contractor. We do new construction, as you can see, I came from a job site, but we do new construction as well as, we'll do some, every now and again, we'll do a custom-built home. Sometimes we'll do a renovation of some sort for different people. We also do some work for the state. I want you to know that there's a name that if you wanna know anything about us, he's an old head like me, he's been with the State Licensing Board for many years, he's just, his health has been an issue, and he's just retired from them, but he's known us and our company for years. His name is Tom Cherry. So anything you ever wanna know about us, I can promise you, he knows it. He won't, he knows everything about us. I tried calling him before I came here because I was gonna drop his name, and I don't like to drop names on people, but he knew about what I have done out here, and he's even called some of the people, I think, on the private projects that I have been asked to do, where that I was taken. I wasn't here to look at private work. I was here to look at stuff that was controlled by the city. And so when I got put out on private stuff, I thought, well, what's up with this? What's happening? Where are they taking me? And so when I questioned the gentleman that I was working with, and again, I wouldn't name call unless you guys tell me to, but the fact of the matter is, is they had a certain way that they wanted to do it.
So everybody knows what you're talking about, excuse me.
Pardon me?
So everybody knows what you're talking, this is on the flood, right?
That is on all of your emergency flooding that happened in the city of Lefolli.
Who called you?
Pardon me?
Who called you to come do this?
John Jeffries called me. And so, anyway, I wanna, you know, if we need, and believe me, I'm an old head. I don't, I didn't wish to be here today, but when you push me back so far in a corner and you say things that are untrue and unjust, then you will call me out. And I was threatened to the point to say that I was gonna be turned in to the Better Businesses Bureau, and I told him, I said, "That's more than fine, because, you know, they probably know us as well, you know, we've been out here for a long time." But our company, we do a tremendous amount of emergency work, just like what Lefolli had had. I've got pictures on this phone that will show you where we go to major catastrophes. Just got back from New Orleans, did major structures out there. I've worked with the FEMA people. I've worked with the SBA. I've worked with these guys, they know us. They check us out. They, doing your emergency work is not like it used to be years and years ago. It's a situation that where, when you're called out on these type of catastrophes, they wanna know who the contractor is, they wanna know his license, they wanna know all his certifications, and they know that inside of our company, that we, not only are we an unlimited general contractor, but we have a flood and fire restoration program that we've had for probably 30 years or more. We did it in the early 80s. We also are certified in asbestos abatement. We're also certified in mold remediation. So this is right, what you guys had was directly in my wheelhouse. And how I got contacted for this project was I was out in the Lefolli area doing an emergency water line break, and I was recommended to Mr. Jeffries, and from there, I got a phone call, and then we kind, we stayed, we stayed here two days. And I'm not gonna share with you at this point in time unless it does become an issue to where, that we make it, make it a unpleasant thing or an ugly thing.
So I understand that the city is refusing to pay this?
That's, that's...
I don't know anything about this.
That's, that's the reason I want y'all to see it, because we don't think it's been circulated. We don't think that anybody's told. And I'm gonna tell you something else. I can go away quietly, this is not a big bill. It's not a major bill, believe me. It will not put my company in the least bit of jeopardy. It's not gonna change my habits if we collect or if we didn't collect it. But the fact of the matter is, we're due it, we did the work, I was here after hours on the weekend, and the thing that made me come here the most today was the fact that I had people to tell me that weren't, that was private people, that wanted me to do their work. I wasn't here to say, hey, I've got plenty of work, we're covered up at this moment, but I was here to try to help the people in Lefolli. But when the people asked me, the private people asked me where I wasn't even supposed to be on private jobs, they said, "Well, you know so much about this, you've done this, you've been out here for all these years. Would you do our work?" I didn't ask them, "Hey, would you do my work for me? Would you let, would you let me come and work for you?" I didn't even bring any contracts. I didn't bring anything with me to send any go-to-work orders. That wasn't my goal. But the fact of the matter, when the people asked me, and I told them, I said, "Well", I said, "I don't know what I'm doing here on private work, but I said, 'I'll be happy to do your work if someone here doesn't do it.'" I'm very familiar with all the franchise companies and all the people that are just my competitors. But it absolutely baffled me for a bill like that has, that's set before you, and for me to spend two days out here and a couple of days at our office, putting in that scope of work into an insurance estimate that the FEMA people and the SBA would recognize that I'm having problems getting somebody to send me a bill like that. I mean, to get, send me to get payment for something like that. So it didn't just become that little bitty dinky bill that you've got in front of you. It becomes, to me personally, it becomes a character issue. And I'm gonna tell you something, they picked on the wrong contractor when they picked on Jim Emmert to try to do stuff that is not right. And I'm gonna tell you that straight up, and this thing can blow up, it can do whatever it wants to do. And I have all the documentation. I have a file here a mile thick. I have everything that we done in this, in this city on the private work. It shows every damage, something that you would do in assessment work. I can't come through and assess your damages unless I come in and do a scope of work on your building. I gotta know how many square feet it's in, I gotta know what I was damaged. I was taken to that building, and I was taken to another private building, and then I was asked to meet in a parking lot. And then after I met in that parking lot, I seen things were not going the way that they should, and so I let another person know, and after that, I was told, well, this stopped work. I said, "Fine, I don't have problems stopping work." I said, "Just pay me for a while, then I go away." And what hurt me the worst was, is the stories that got told to the church people and to the, to the other company, I don't know where it was, in apartments, or it was assisted living, or what it was, but the stinking lies that they were sending on a text message was absurd, because they didn't do their homework. If they had only checked, he, but when I say they only checked, he knew, or he wouldn't have called me to start with, because he already had the background and the information that he needed. And so my situation is today, I can leave and walk out of this door, I cannot share anything with you inside of here what I have. If you want it, I'll give it all to you, because as I'm trying to tell you, I wanna do what's just, and I'm not unjust. And I'm gonna tell you, all you council members right here, right now, you listen to what I have to tell you. There's two ways you know people. There's two ways that you'll ever know people. You, and it's a, it's a double M. You marry them, or it's money. Okay? And let me tell you something, when money gets involved, in 40 years, I can give you all the people I've worked in, and now not one of them tell you I've ever paid anybody for a job. I don't need that in my life. I don't need it. I'm not going there. And the fact of the matter is, if this, if what I've just told you today, if it, if you council members, if you'll listen to what I'm here to tell you, if this doesn't set your curiosity on fire than you would, it's way. Okay? And that's what I've got to say. And if you, if you wanna pay my bill, that's fine.
I understand that you were called here by Mr. Jeffries to do work, and then the city's refusing to pay, is that correct?
That is correct. That's what he's told.
Can you address that, Jimmy?
Yes, ma'am, we sure can.
Mr. Hammond, do we need to address that right now?
What's that?
Do we need to address that right now?
Well, probably so. I mean, if you wanna do a separate workshop, that's fine, too.
Well, I'm sure Mr. Emmert would like to get paid, considering it's been six months, and he's...
Well, we have...
But Jimmy, you were, you was called in by Jimmy to look at the...
That's correct. I have, that's the reason I'm telling you guys, you don't have to take my word for it, and if he wants to make it really ugly, I can show you how ugly we can make it. But the fact of the matter is, is you'll be able to recognize his number on my phone, you people know it, I'm sure. You'll be able to recognize at that point in time, other messages that has been sent to me, that I pretty much, because I was getting two things. I was getting it, I was getting it hit from every angle. I was having, you know, I was getting a phone call and say, "Hey, we need to do this, we need to do that." And I'd say, "Hey, you know, it's, you know, I'm an old head, I mean, it's not my first day on the job." I said, "Hey," I said, "send it to me, what you need me to do." So guess what? They were crazy enough to send it to me. Well, then, after saying that, after saying that, I said, "Well," I said, "if you're gonna work on this project and you're wanting money for, I mean, if you're wanting money for this project, then I guess you're willing to work for it, right? That's what we're gonna do." The city of Lefolli, they loved me, they just didn't call me up and say, "Hey, I'm gonna, we want you guys to come out here, we're gonna give you a bunch of money." It wasn't like that.
Jimmy, so what, Jimmy, FEMA was gonna pay for certain of the damages?
I knew how this, I had shared with, with him and with the, as he knows, he knows exactly what was going on on this. But I could, but I can tell you this, the fact of the matter is, is it's a situation to where, that I have been holding back, and my wife has called the city of Lefolli, she's, I will share this with you right here, just so you know. And here's another thing I want you guys...
Is that your working file on this project that you were...
Some of it is, yes, but here's something I wanna share with you, so you people will know.
I see that, please.
Here is a layout, here's a layout of a private structure that they were asking me to do. I attended meetings here. I attended meetings here where I was being asked from private people. They even went as far as to give our company, they did, they checked us out. They gave us, they gave our company keys to everything that they own. I set meetings up out here, and I went to them, and I spoke with them, and I said, "You do understand that this has nothing to do, as far as I understand, with the city?"
I want to speak about places.
And, and over here is something to where that we would go in, and this is a file that probably doesn't need to be handed over to you just for a second, but still, yet, as I say, I can, I can, I can leave and I can go away, but the fact of the matter is, is when I came here, I was totally under the impression that I was gonna be looking at nothing except what the city was in control of. You know what? I didn't go to the first structure that they was in control of. And I kept, they kept asking me as a contractor, "Well, why would I not be going to, why I'm not going to the middle school? Why am I not going over to the fire hall? Why am I not going to all the business areas that I'm being told of in the beginning that I'm gonna be doing? I was gonna be, I was gonna be working for that guy, doing what he was controlling." But instead, I'm out looking at stuff, and I didn't even have a, this is not a normal practice for us. We have a major form that we fill out, it's a scope sheet. Well, when I got out there, I started digging around for something that I could just handwrite me some notes on. We stayed here for two days, and we've hand, hand put all of the notes inside of this, pages and pages and pages, and even if you will look, I was even having other people, I'm sure you people in the, in the, in the Lefolli area will recognize this, maybe you do, I was even contacting, I don't know it, John Snodderly, I may be butchering his name, he's with the Lefolli Housing Authority, is that, I guess that's correct.
That is correct.
And if I'm wrong on it, I'm just wrong? But that was handed to me and said, "Hey, you have so much knowledge on what you're doing, we want you to go look at all this other stuff." He sent text messages out, telling people, he didn't have a clue who I was, he didn't know anything about us, and he scared the people to death. And then the people came back to me, and they were, they were going nuts. And I said, "You know what I told the church people? I said, 'Listen,' I said, 'if there's anything that that guy told you that was the truth, it was a fact that I did not, I have not known him, and I haven't met him.'" I said, "That's the only thing he's told you so far is the truth, but to say that anything to slander our company or to threaten me with the Better Businesses Bureau, I can tell him today, call him. If you wanna call the State Licensing Board, call them. They'll tell you real quick like who we are, and if you wanna see state projects that we're involved in, that's, that can be done as well." And let me tell you something, when you work, when you work for all the different people that we work for, they don't leave a rock unturned. We've been clean all of our life.
I'm still clueless. I wanna know why we haven't paid it, so I would like to know, Jimmy.
He said he'd pay me, he told me he'd pay me whatever he wanted to pay me, and he didn't think I'd be here today.
So, bill me in.
Since Mr. Emmert's finished, I'll be happy to answer, since he's done.
And there's one other thing I wanna do. Depending on what he tells you guys, is depending on where I take this phone, and I make a liar out of him here today, because I'm gonna show you where they contacted me and asked me if I had interest in doing your work. They told me that I was gonna do your work, not private work, but I was here to do damage assessment. That's what I was here to do, but when I started getting people to ask me, he said, "Why aren't you taking, why aren't you taking?" He said, "He thought I was out hunting work." He said, "Well, you're saddling up..." I said, "These people are asking me to do their work." I said, "I don't even have any, I didn't even have our crews here or anything, it was me, and he don't want me to tell you who I was here."
Can I interrupt you a second, please?
Yes, sir.
You know, I've not seen the bill till just now, and I really don't know a whole lot about it, just what you're hearing, but, you know, at Jimmy College, you come in, you come in on weekends, been two days here on the fault, looking at the water, damages, everything, I don't really care what it was, but, you know, I'm the guy that signs checks, and I'm, you know, and I'm pretty sure we owe you. At Jimmy College, you come here, we'll pay you.
I appreciate that, and I thank you. And I can leave quietly, without getting this guy in any more trouble. And I'm not here today to get him in trouble, because I'm just telling you guys right now, if you're happy with him, you keep him, but you remember what I told you about being married and having a money association with people? If you think that money don't change people, let me tell you something, I've been, I'm an old head, I've been out here 40 years, and let me tell you something, when people tell me that they want, they want money's hand, money's hand to them, they're asking And let me tell you something, when people tell me that they won't, they won't, money's ain't, money's ain't to them, they're asking the wrong guy. I don't need it. I can, I can quit my business today and I could go home and go away. But because the Lord's gave me my help and I'm, I'm, I'm a, I'm a active guy, I'm ready to, you know, I'm ready to go to work. I was ready to help the city of Lafayette. It wasn't about stinking money. I didn't, I didn't have to have the jobs.
Jim, I lived here all my life and lost these people here too, lived here all my life. I've never seen a flood like it had this June. And I worked for the city's street park for almost thirty-five years. And I've been out there kinds of storms. Now, next church was flooded up there. I've seen it coming close to the church, but I never seen it that night that I was up there, that church was flooding and getting people out of houses. And Mr. Hoskins, we've got equipment, he volunteers his equipment, his time, fueling everything, go up there and turn it one church down. And I volunteered my time in the weekends and Thursdays, the go up there once they got that church pretty perfect. I've volunteered my time, I used efficiency equipment to do it, but load that stuff to help that church. And we're here to help the people. It's not about Jimmy Jeffries or any of his council members or Mike Stanfield, it's about serving God's people. You know, I apologize for this.
Well, may I say one other thing?
Yes, sir.
My main concern is when I go to a, uh, is when I go to a catastrophe area, is what kind of guy am I? Am I guy that's, am I guy in there that's just trying to see what kind of number I can put on a piece of paper to see what direction, you know, how, how much money that I can make there? Whereas my job to go in and try to let people know, hey, this is what you have. This is what you, you know, uh, educate them some in the field, knowing that, that if they are in a catastrophe area, what are they, what are they subjecting theirselves to? I went to this church and I seen people sitting outside and I was scared to death, I'd scare them to death. They were in a category three cleanup and it was outside eating pizza. They had kids out there. You got viruses, you got disease, you got hepatitis. And they're sitting out there, no protective clothing on, they're sitting out there eating pizza and he didn't even know to tell them to get off the front. I said, get, get containment of this area, get containment, if that's the first thing we do when we go. Get people out of here so that they can't get hurt. And then we suit up and we come in and we do what we got to do. I never did hear anybody from the city of Lafayette, in which I don't remember how many of you were here, but I didn't see any person with the city of Lafayette come up and say, hey, Mr. Emmert, can you tell us, is it okay for these people to be on this job site? I did tell some people over to church and said, listen, you know, I don't want to scare you to death, but you don't need to be out here eating pizza. And, uh, it was a category three cleanup. It's not clean water that we were dealing with. And so what I was trying to do is, is tell people, because I had no clue, I had no clue that I was going to private work. And this will tell you that I didn't know. But I ended up there, but I, but I think I know at this point in time why I ended up on private work. I do know that. But I will tell you this, I was good enough and you can call the people around where I've just circulated this. You can call the people that's in management of this and you can ask them. I told them, I said, let's do this, so that your guys will know that I'm not a bad apple. I says, let me come back to you and hand you every bit of the keys that you've gave me and I will not do your work. Because I don't want you to try to figure out where I'm a good guy or I'm a bad guy, bad guy, because of what he texted to them. That's beyond crazy. That's beyond crazy. But when money gets involved, that's the way it happens.
So what did he text to them?
Well, I, until, until I see, I, I want to, I don't want to, uh, I'm sure he's going to think that I've slandered him and slammed him and, and everything and I'm fine with that. And he can make any kind of issues, but if he really wants it to go down a really bad dirt road, then I'm very able to take it there. And at that point in time, we'll drive other people back in and then we'll have them to state what they know and what they see. And I don't think he wants to go there. But if he does, I'm happy with it. And if he thinks that $2,000 bill is going to make or break me, then he's got another thing coming. It's not about that money. And I, I'm, I guess I'm through and I'm sorry that, I'm sorry I had to come here to waste your all's time, because I think it is a waste of time. But I didn't know if my paperwork was being circulated. My wife called on, on December the, my wife called and I'll tell you who, and you can ask so that y'all can find, see what I'm telling you. We sent an email on December the sixth to Barbara Wilson and she wasn't aware of what was going on. She said, do what? I said, we were out there, we did this. We did a follow-up on February the third of this year and we sent it to Mrs. Chapman. I think I'm, I think I'm right, Chapman, do you have a Mrs. Chapman there?
Yes.
Okay, then she was notified of it, didn't know about it. So it's like somebody's got a piggy bank and they've got it all hidden, they're only wanting to dig out of it themselves, they don't want to share or do whatever that they're supposed to be doing. And this is just a small, minor thing. What I've told you guys now, and I apologize again for taking your time, but the fact of the matter is, is whichever direction that this goes, I'm very much prepared for it.
Can I see your working file, please?
The, this here?
Yeah. Not, not the yellow book, you said everything was in the green book.
Well, this is, this is, inside of this green book.
I want to see, if you spent this much time, I just want to see your notes, your etches, your.
Well, this is the notes I have on the private structures and the, and the diagram layout that I have on the private structures. Uh, the only thing at this point in time that, that, uh, that, and, and I'll be, I, I don't have anything to hide, here's the type contractor.
I'm a contractor also, and I just want to see what you've done for this $2,800, is all I'm asking.
Then, then you would need this and that, and the two, on that statement, it should tell how many days and it should, I, I don't know if it was itemized for you or not.
It is not itemized, that's all I'm asking. This is involved in weekends and.
After business hours.
Mr. Evans, did you provide supporting documentation when you submitted the invoice? Did, did you just submit the invoice only or did you submit whatever reports you, you did or?
All right. Uh, I could, I don't know, uh, I'm going to look, because I, hold on just one minute, because I've got it right here. Let me see what, this is what my lady at the office, she collected things off of our reports and she, and she figured out, uh, the time and things of that nature. And before I tell you that, I see. I see that she's gave you a, uh, a, what I would call at that point in time, a, just a, a one-line, uh, uh, total dollar amount without, without a breakdown in it.
I can't, my company would not even consider paying this bill, but we would have contacted you and told you why we weren't going to pay this bill.
Pardon me?
My company would not pay a bill of this nature.
Right.
Because it's not broken down, there's not enough information.
Okay, let me ask you this.
This is the first time I've seen it now, but I'm telling you what, if that landed on my desk, I'd say no.
I'll be happy to put it in the format that the FEMA people would hand you, that they would hand you if I was a contractor. I've been doing this since nineteen eighty-one. I have all of the software packages that associated with, on hard drive, that will break all that down. There's a reason that that's not broken down. And I'm going to tell you the reason.
Okay.
The reason that's not broken down is because we were going to see, I told my, I told my wife, I said, I've already talked to Mr. Jeffries. He called me and we had a pretty nasty little phone conversation. And so I told him, I said, well, I said, I'm going to send the bill. I said, you know how much time I got involved and all that? I said, I'm not going to itemize it for one reason. And it was because of the number of the people and who, who the people were that were on that job site.
I was there. I was there.
Did you recognize everybody that was there?
As far as who?
That was with me.
I just recall you.
No. See, that's where the, I was told not.
Mr. Evans is done, I'll be happy to address it and I'm not going to.
I was told not to introduce, uh, the people that was there. I was told not to, please don't do that, okay? I won't. Uh, but in saying that, uh, uh, I would be happy to put it in any format you wish. You can, you know.
If you want, if you want me to vote to pay you, if that's what this has come to today. I need backup, I can spend tax burden money without backup. That's all I'm asking for.
Pardon?
That's all I'm asking for.
Okay, I appreciate that.
But my point is if Mr. Jeffries called him and told him to come, then the city needs to pay him.
Let's let Mr. Jeffries explain himself.
Yeah.
If, if Mr. Evans is done.
Yeah, I, I will say this. After, I, if you don't mind, I'll stand here. And if, if he wants to put himself in jail, I reserve the right to counter, uh, re, uh, say what he's going to, what he's going to say. Because I'm going to tell you something, I'm going to make his face turn as red as that flag over there as soon as he opens up and says something that's negative. And then I'll let you guys be the judge of it.
I was going to suggest this, uh, the, the, the bill is, is, I agree with Mark, I, just because we get a bill from the city doesn't mean we have to pay all of them. And I know there's backup circumstances and I, I get that. Uh, but what I would suggest, if you want to supply some supporting documentation to it, maybe revisit at the workshop, which is probably a better spot to probably discuss this and for the next month's workshop.
I think it's a good idea. But it, wait, it's been a year, so you undoubtedly don't have to have.
But I don't understand why, why is, why has it been a secret? Why has nobody not know about this? Why haven't, why hasn't my bill been circulated?
Bills aren't circulating. They go through a normal process.
It's very normal, but sometimes councils not where ever bill that passes through here, that's not that.
Where a one percent.
I'll make a motion at this time, we address this at the workshop.
Exactly.
And in the interim, if, if Mr. Evans, you can supply that to.
How does documentation?
You can supply whatever.
Show this $2,800.
I sure will, I'd be happy to.
I'd love to hear Mr. Jeffries' response to his allegations, I'd like to, to hear it right now.
Not a problem.
It is proper.
I have a motion, second stand, hold it, please, at the workshop.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Hoskins?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
What's your concerns? Thank you, Jim, come on, please.
Thank you.
Get, get out your documents, give, bring them, you come to the workshop.
Yes. Sorry, paying to this, I hate to waste your all's time. I apologize for having to spend so much time, but it's a.
And instead of us having to review it in the workshop, can you send this back up in advance of the, we may review it prior to the workshop?
Absolutely.
Please.
Uh, and, and let me say this, if you want, uh, if y'all want to write this down. Uh, my wife's name is Karen Emmert at Comcast.net. She'll be happy to forward over any documentation to anybody's email address that, that you would need. Uh, I mean, any documentation for breakdowns is what I meant to say, uh, on, on this particular.
What is your general rate of?
Do you come in, Jim?
Well, if you, what I would like to show you is inside, inside of our Exacimate program, it shows emergency work to where that you're doing it on weekends or after hours or things of that nature. And every bit of it, it shows standard rates, it shows emergency rates. And so everything that we've done here was weekend stuff, after hours, plus not just time that we spent here, all of the time that my people spent at my office in the admin field trying to put this stuff together in a format that I wanted to send. But I was, I was being told things that I was trying to hope it would go away. And then it got to the point to where that, uh, he gave me a call and he gave me down the road. And buddy, when he gave me down the road, he was messing with the wrong contractor.
Mr. Evans, and that, and your, whatever you submit will be broken down, I guess.
That's correct, it'll be itemized out.
Office time and then whatever you're building.
Great, that's it, okay. Jim, do you have your wife, Karen, to contact Stan Fowles, he's the city clerk, follow the paper, okay?
Okay.
Stan Fowles.
All right.
I, I have a comment. Um, I agree with Ann, Mr. Jeffries, you said that you would address his comments when he finished speaking. I'd like to hear what you have to say about this gentleman's bill that he has, has been going unpaid.
I will address it in the next workshop, ma'am, that's what the council voted that they wanted and I'll, I'll defer to the wishes of council and address it next workshop.
Okay, Jim, thank you, Jim. Mr. Mullins, are you, are you, Jim, are you okay, sir? I'm talking to Mr. Mullins, he's in the way. Jim, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm good.
Jim, you got, you got my shoes and pedals on your brakes, Jim, you realize.
Behind the co-op.
Right.
Who engineered that job?
You want to add a three, right?
Behind the co-op, who engineered that job?
You're talking about the rock.
I'm talking about the rock, just throw it over the hill, that's co-op. Somebody going to get killed out there, I'm telling you, I told you down here and, and when it happened. And I told Bill, I said, Bill, what are you going to do about Cherry Street? Bill said, we're going to get a grant. I said, what if you don't get a grant? Bill said, we're going to fix it in-house. It's putting, throwing rock over the hill, is that what you call in-house, Bill?
Temporary stabilization.
Oh, that's true.
Mr. Sharp, that was, that bank was temporarily stabilized. We have applied for a imminent threat grant. That grant should be, we should have that grant. They told us roughly six months, so we're probably looking at June or July of this year. Uh, we have had an engineering company out here looking at that. But at the point that we have the, uh, grant in place, then the, uh, engineering company will come and.
You don't understand what I'm saying.
I, I understand what you're saying, sir. They temporarily stabilized the bank.
There's no, there's no guardrails up. If two cars try to pass there, one of them going to wind up on top of the co-op.
There's another place to.
That is my fear, that somebody is going to wind up on top of the co-op.
Can we make that one-way traffic?
Then who's going to be responsible for that?
Wrap the roof on Cherry Street.
Who will be responsible for that?
Can we make that one-way traffic, the other repairs been made?
I've never heard of an engineering group dumping rock over a bank. And he's just sliding down the hill, do you mean just sliding down the hill?
I'll take full responsibility for that.
It's sliding down the hill.
When you dump it, it's going to slide some.
It's going to slide, boom, down, it's slide every time it freezes and thaws.
We're trying to stabilize that, just enough to keep the dirt from coming out much more down. The asphalt is not broken off.
It has, Jim, you can go co-op, you can stick, you can, you can look, you can stick your arm, boom, back down.
Wrap it, we have a grant for that.
What?
We have applied for a grant to fix Cherry Street.
Okay. We're forgetting about that. Let's talk about the rock quarry.
Okay.
Jimmy got on TV, said the city is going to take care of the rock quarry, we ain't going to have no rock quarry. Got his picture, Mike, you was out of, you was out of town or something, you didn't get your picture in the, on TV. Jimmy got his picture on TV, the city's going to knock the rock quarry out.
It's not what I said, Mr.
What'd you say, Jimmy? I, I wish that.
It's not what I said, Mr. Sharp.
December twenty-sixth.
Anyway, we're still working with, we're still working with Tennessee Department of Transportation and, uh, on the entrance to that thing. And we're still working on that, sir. We're still working on the rock quarry at this time, we're working with the county, Tennessee Department of Transportation, and the city's working on that at this time, sir.
December the twenty-sixth is when it was in the Lafayette press, that Jimmy Jeffries said the city had, uh, although it wasn't in the city, the city had, uh, the preference over the rock quarry coming in.
The zoning?
Yeah.
It, it wasn't our, it wasn't our urban growth boundary. What we found out is since that was not zoned prior to the rock quarry going in, that our urban growth boundary, we couldn't stop them because it was in our urban growth boundary.
Well, the county.
We actually consulted with an attorney about that and that's what we found out about it.
The county is giving, hard in attorney, giving them $50,000.
Listen, listen, we've got, we've got Reed representing us, we ain't giving him 50,000, so don't, so don't say that too loud, he's going, he's going to raise his rates.
I'll say, listen, Mr. Sharp, the county, is that, they do have an attorney because of the property. We, we don't have any, any planning discretion over that property. We can't, we can't give it a thumbs up or thumbs down. It's the county's, the, the ball's in the county's court, which they are, they'll try to attempt to stop, I, I guess.
I can swear, I can swear, Red, I seen Jimmy on television, holding his hat like that. He said, I'm trying to catch fly rock. When the, the fly is falling, Jimmy, you said.
I moved his arm. We're, we're trying to deal with T-Dot on the commercial entrance, the city does have some, the city does have some say-so on the commercial entrance. And we're working on that at this time, Mr. Sharp. Unfortunately, the wheels of government just turn a little bit slow sometimes, we're working on.
How will they fix Cherry Street?
Okay, Ray, thank you, Ray.
How will they fix Cherry Street before somebody gets killed?
You'll make it one line, chief, how do we do that?
You cast the vote, change it one line, it's fixed.
Make most, make Cherry Street one direction until the repairs have been made.
That's right. Which way, Mark?
That matter to me. That matter of late. I don't know.
It won't work. It won't work. I'll tell you what, Mr. Hoskins, can we, can we measure that road and look at it at the places Mr. Sharp's talking about and then revisit making it one-lane?
They're happy to. I'll draw them up.
Thank you.
It's correct. It's correct.
You know, you know the dangers right there.
Any more comments, anybody, please? Any more comments?
I have a comment about another issue.
Could be able to.
Last Monday in the workshop, they mentioned the day center. Why is it not on the agenda today? Why are they having a separate meeting on Monday where the public's not invited to it?
Public isn't invited.
Public's invited to any meeting we have.
Well, it's funny that, I just found out about it five minutes ago, and I'm the public.
I didn't know about it yet, so you're, you're ahead of me.
Today, we just sent some things out to the businesses. Uh, I've actually got a list of other folks here that was in the meeting to call. Uh, Mr. Mullins had a automobile accident, so I was called out of City Hall and just didn't have time to finish that today.
But why isn't that on the agenda for tonight? If it was in the workshop, why is it not being discussed tonight?
It was in the planning commission.
We didn't, we didn't discuss it in the council workshop. We did not.
But you said there's a meeting just coming Monday?
Yeah, that's what I was told, that there was a meeting this Monday with these, uh, the representatives of the homeless committee commission.
After, after, at the end of the planning, at the end of the planning commission meeting, at the end of the planning commission meeting, they asked me to set up a meeting with the business folks and the people from Tennessee Valley Coalition for the Homeless and the Harbor. Unfortunately, all of you all, unless you want to advertise it, can't be there all at once. You can't, unless y'all want to advertise it and have it as a workshop council meeting. But the planning commission just asked me to set up a meeting with those folks so they could sit down and see if everybody could work together to get, to have a successful resolution for this, uh, issue that's came up.
Well, as a downtown business owner, I didn't know anything about this meeting. I didn't know anything as, as council member either.
When Monday, schedule Monday?
Yeah.
They, they shouldn't have brought, I dropped off, uh, 25 copies to go to all the downtown businesses.
No one brought anything by us at the store all day today.
Okay, I'll get a list of where all they went. Uh, but I, I drop, gave 25 copies out to go to all the businesses downtown.
But what people ought to understand, we're not in control of the-
How are you gonna let the public know?
It's the planning commission meeting.
Because a, a, as a, as a member of this community, I have a right to be there and to support this.
Sure you do. Yes, ma'am.
It shouldn't be held, it shouldn't be held without public knowledge, is what I'm saying.
Like, like I said, ma'am, Mr. Mullins had a wreck and I was in, I don't wanna say interrupted, 'cause that's never a good word. You know, Mr. Mullins has been in an accident. But I, I had, I had to leave what I was doing, which was working on that today, to get all the information out to everybody and go to the accident scene. I got back 10 minutes after 5:00, so I've not had time to finish getting everything completed.
Okay, so what time is the meeting on Monday?
5:00.
5:00 in here?
It will be, yes, ma'am, it will be here at City.
Jim, will you put down the green screen over here?
So I apologize. I was working on that today, but, but, uh, you know, a city employee involved in an accident just took precedence over finishing, getting that stuff out. And I'll, I'll finish getting it out tomorrow.
I hope you're all okay.
Yes, ma'am.
This meeting Monday is neither a planning commission meeting nor a city council meeting. It is a gathering of the downtown businesses and residents and the people who are for and or against putting this new business in town. And that's what it's for.
Well, yeah, Mark, if everybody works together and say, "We can fix this thing," you know what I'm saying?
We have to work together.
We did. That's right, ma'am.
I firmly believe what you just said, that we will work together, that we can resolve this thing. My question was, I saw this on the WAF news this morning. And it says, "The agenda lists topics of resolution and ordinance, accepting the year-end audit and appointing Jimmy Rogers to the E-Board, E-911 Board." This was on the WAF news this morning. It says, "Seemingly light agenda is headed for the mayor and the council tonight." We had not heard a word about it. You say you all didn't know about it either. But it was on and it was expressed, and we were not told anything about it. So a few of us talked, and we wanted to come down tonight and hear. And when we got here, we were told, "It's not on the agenda." It's on the news.
But it was supposed to be on the agenda.
I asked the news where this, I called that WAF and I asked them, "Where did you get your information?" That it was gonna be on there tonight. And they said they got it from you.
And 911, point, he is on there.
But it says-
That was in the workshop.
"The agenda lists topics of resolution and ordinance, accepting the year-end audit and the appointment of Jimmy E. Rogers." The thing started out, the whole thing says, "Will talk of a pro- proposed homeless day center continue at tonight's WAF meeting?"
We didn't-
I asked them where they got their information. They said from you.
It's a question. It says, it's a question. You ever seen that, I was asking, "Will it continue?" You know, our, our, on our agenda is we're accepting, uh, the 911. We have some resolutions to the budget and some resolutions to the, uh, alcohol beverages.
Says, "A seemingly light agenda is headed for the mayor and council with the city of WAF this afternoon at 5:30." Meeting to be held at City Hall. However, the last two meetings, workshop and planning commission, were dominated by the talk of a proposal, proposed homeless center that is planned in a building at the corner of Central Indiana Avenue. The agenda lists topics of resolution and ordinance, accepting the year-end audit and appointing Jim Rogers as the E-911 Board. This says, "The agenda lists topics." Where did they, WAF get their agenda?
Mr. WAF, do you answer that question?
It's saying, it's saying it was responsible by the number one board member, is what that's saying.
It says, "The agenda lists topics of resolution and ordinance." Do you want to see my phone?
No.
You don't agree with me?
No, ma'am, I'm just glad Mr. Frank is here.
Well, if you'll look at the agenda back there, it says there's a resolution and an ordinance that's on the agenda. Is that correct? Okay. And that you're going to vote on accepting the year-end audit. Is that on the agenda? Okay. And then, uh, you're going to appoint a 911 board member?
Yes, sir.
Jim, if she would like to see this, this is confirmation of the agenda that you all received. The same agenda that you had.
Cherry, it says, it's a question.
And, and the topics are the-
I just felt like that we saw this, and that's why we're here tonight. And, uh, I'm gonna be honest with you, and I'm gonna say right here, I've been lied to by this bunch of boards, and I can be lied to.
Okay. I got an announcement to make. Mr. Sharp, I'm talking about the rock quarry. Steve Boran, 2 dollars, Robert Lane, is the main man of East Tennessee Highway Department. He called me yesterday, and he's gonna meet with us, the city council, and county commissioners about an entrance going into the rock. As far as the rock for itself, there's definitely no doubt about it. Not one thing.
Not what Jimmy said.
We did, we did that entrance, that entrance going into there. Like I told Mr. Boran yesterday.
We're gonna have short tape, everything everybody says, but for, uh, Bill Archer, Jimmy Jeffries. When they start taking everything, say-
It is taped. Mayor, I've got some announcements.
Well, Cherry Street, half the last year, it ain't done nothing but, you go out Cherry Street, go to the co-op, look for it up.
I've got, I've got to give them some announcements about some other property real quick. That's okay. Y'all asked me to speak with, uh, Mr. Lloyd and Mr. Ellison. Uh, not Mr. Ellison. Mr. Lloyd gave me, uh, called me yesterday, yesterday with, uh, an offer on that property. Mr. Ellison says he wants, he just wants a document from the city at this time acknowledging that he does have a right of way that we would open it up if he needs it. Uh, Mr. Lloyd has said that he wants 189 for the property. He says he wants a 10-foot buffer zone between his building and the start before we start using it, a 6-foot privacy fence. He also says he wants to answer within 15 days if we're gonna take the property or not, and he would like to close on the property in 45 days. So if you all can consider that, I'm sorry, so we need to discuss this at workshop or we're even about? If you all can just consider it and, and let me know, I mean, if, if you all aren't interested in it, then I can just tell him. If you are interested in it, you'll have to vote on the, uh, the whole process.
The property appraised now.
We, we haven't, we haven't had it appraised at this time. We haven't had it appraised yet.
The last time it was appraised was 147,000.
Is that when I called, praised it?
That was the entire piece of property. I mentioned it all.
He only needs 60 feet. He does not want to, he does not want to break the property up.
Five feet ready? No. Not that.
It'd be best in our interest.
What, what?
Move our shit and young birthing.
I agree.
It'd be best in the city's entrance and the taxpayers' entrance. To move the shit and move the feet.
There's, there's Anthony. Of course, Ms. Thompson, buildings, it's father.
That's my opinion.
What is the cost of moving the building?
It's, uh-
Take it, I'll get this taken down. We don't have any place to move it to.
No.
Well, let, let me suggest this. If, if you all are interested in moving that building and moving the lot, let, let me suggest this. If we could just have Mr. Troutman give Mr. Ellison, and that's all he, so he don't want us to tear the building down at this time or to move the, move the, uh, the lot. He just wants a document from the city that says that we recognize the fact that he does have that right of way.
Will we vote on that?
So-
Yeah, the motion, well, if we, if we put it off, we're just putting it off to the inevitable. You know, if we pay that much money for that piece of property.
And if we, you know, if we-
If, like you said, if we move it in-house, and now it's gonna take a little work. Jim can testify to that, right, Jim?
We're good, Joe.
Jim's gonna have to run the hood. Your horn, scooted on out this way. Move that dirt pile and then-
We also have the option to condemn a portion of it. If you're just talking about the matter of feet, is that-
Actually, I think the right of way is on Danny's property too. It's another one that we're saying.
So, I mean, if you all will just consider that, consider what you want to do, just, you all just let me know, then I'll get back with Mr. Lloyd. But he did, he did want to answer, you know, what we wanted, not Mr. Hoskins and Mr.-
When we find out what it will cost to move it?
We move it in-house, Jim, see it?
It's still gonna cost something, and it's still gonna cost more than it is.
Wait, you just have to tear it down, rebuild it. But, you know, we can do it, no matter whether that's a priority or whether you want it done. What else left? Let some of this other stuff go and do it.
Well, if we give Mr. Ellison the letter that we've got time to do, if we have precedent, then we can take care of those things and then do it as we have.
That's private, we can do it later.
So if we send Mr. Ellison the letter, then we have, we have time to deal with it.
We know what we're involving, Bill.
Are you getting the letter, Rick?
Yes.
All right. Do you got any more announcements?
No, sir.
All right. I have a form, Mr. Resolutions, I have number one, Resolutions 2020-06. The name is Mr. Regional Budget, 2019-2020 Budget. What's council pleasure?
Make the motion, Mayor.
Have motion, Mr. Bush, have second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoskins, yeah.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Hoskins?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. I have number two, ordinance 2020-01, meaning the ordinance title, eight alcohol beverage privilege taken. This is the first reading. Countess pleasure?
Make a motion, please.
Motion, Mark, have second, please.
Second.
Second, Mr. Wood, I'll run.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Hoskins?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Under administration, I have number one, acceptance of the year-end budgets, 630, 1900. What's council pleasure?
Motion accept.
Motion, Mr. Hoskins, have second. Second, Ms. Thompson, I'll run.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Hoskins?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. I have number two, appointing E-911 board member, and the name was Jimmy Rogers, was truly out there. What's council pleasure?
Make a motion, Mayor.
Have motion, Hot Rod, you have second.
Second.
Second, Mark, I'll run.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Hoskins?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Anyhow, you guys put the council. No, you know-
Mark, you got something?
I did have some people that approached me in the past few days. Actually, this is the second time that they have approached me, different people. And this is specifically you, chief, not actually, but for you. They're requesting that we do more foot patrols downtown. I don't know what you guys currently do. I don't know what, you know, your, your plan is. We need to start the foot patrols in the, during the day and in the evenings, you know, after work hours. And the, basically, the downtown area from Tennessee to Indiana, uh, First Street, all the little alleyways in between, just to show the, the business folks and the residents that we're watching out after things.
We'd certainly increase those.
Can you do it every day for them?
Absolutely.
Like, sir.
They do patrol downtown, don't they, Bill?
Yes, we do. But what he's saying is they won't be, they won't be more visible down there. We can increase the activity that we do down there.
And, and suggested Beach Street also, that's the gentleman.
You know, for B's, B's adjourned.
I'll go.
Jim?
I'll hide them.
What we got?
Um, trustees, we can get trustees from the sheriff's department, but we have to have two people sent to Anderson County to get certified to watch them. They don't have, both will be working at the same time, but in case one's off, the others will work. I understand that Assistant Chief is really close to contact with Mallory and the sheriff's department, and she's the one sets up these certifications. I suggest we take one from rec center and one from street department and have them certify and handle these trustees. We'll claim we'll follow it up. We'll send them up one street and down another. You know, it's right.
They don't have to be, they don't have to be armed or have badges?
No, no arms.
That'd be a good job for Johnny Burge and Jim Mullins. Two old pros that.
Well, whoever can give us one out of the street department, Johnny will give us one out of the rec.
What's it, what's the cost of training? Animal?
Not much, anyway.
I used to get a lot of child down there. All we had to do is feed them, you know.
You do pick them, fix them a bag of lunch down the jail.
Is that something we have to vote on, or we just all agreeing to it?
Just, we just have to vote on it. Go pray to it.
We need to vote on it.
Have motion?
I make that.
Make a motion.
Have motion, have second.
I'll second that one.
Second, Mr. Hot Rod, have second.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Hoskins?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, we, me adjourned.
Call the beer board to order.
Mr. Archer?
Where is it?
Mr. Hoskins?
Here.
Mayor Stanfield?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Chairman Wilson?
Here. We don't have any applications?
I've got a motion, I've got a motion adjourned, Mark.
Second.